Alright, so open the, the meeting for the zoning board of appeals today, September 28th, 2021, 7pm, second floor, meeting room A. I'm Kevin Perkins, with me is Josh Parady, Sean Buckley, and Bill Cushing. So our first hearing of the night is 7pm, Mike McDonough, case number 21SP14, 908 High Street, for a special permit for an in-law apartment. So I will read this into the record. The Hanson Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on September 28th, 2021, at 7pm at Hanson Town Hall, on the application of Michael McDonough for a special permit under the Town of Hanson zoning bylaws, section 6BG and section 8D3, to allow for an in-law apartment with an existing house in 908 High Street, map 72 lot 22, Hanson Assessors map, property is located in a Residence A Zone. I have a letter here from the Building Inspector, Zoning Enforcement Officer, Kerry Glass. Dear Honorable Zoning Board of Appeals, I have seen and reviewed the application for Michael McDonough, who is requesting a special permit under the Town of Hanson zoning bylaws, section 6BG and section 8D3, to allow for an in-law apartment within an existing house at 908 High Street, map 72 lot 22, Hanson Assessors map, property is located in a Residence A Zone. This office has no objections regarding this proposal. Permits required must be issued prior to start of any construction in accordance with 780 CMR 105. Is that all we have in here, Virginia?
Yeah.
Alright, you Mike?
Yep.
If you want to just kind of give us an overview, what you're all gonna do?
You might wanna push a little closer, Michael, so I can...
So this microphone can hear me?
Yeah.
Yep, so pretty much, it's an existing home, I just, I'm almost done remodeling it, and I just set it up kind of for a future in-law.
I gotta go.
So there's already a bathroom in there, and I'm just gonna add a small kitchen, and there's just gonna be a bedroom, so it's just a one-bedroom, one-bathroom, small kitchen. That's what I'm planning to do, so, just finished up construction, and everything's on the same meter, gas, electric, so I think I've, and it's under 900 square feet, I think it's just over 600 square feet, has its own egress, there's two spots for parking off the road, um, let's see.
So you have three, three parking spots at least?
Yep.
Two for the dwelling, and then one for the in-law?
Yep. I've got four, and then I can add extra if I need to.
Do you have a copy of this plan, could you?
Um...
Floor plan?
Let's see, yeah, I do. That's the first floor or the second floor?
So, first page is first floor?
Yep.
Second page is second floor?
Okay.
And then, I'm not familiar with your, with your site, so, excuse me?
Yep, no problem.
Um, so that's existing first floor, second floor?
Yep.
And then, are you adding on, uh, I'm sorry, I missed my focus, are you, are you adding on in addition to that, or are you doing it within the dwelling?
It's within the dwelling.
Okay.
There's no extra square footage, the footprint.
So you're just remodeling the floor plan?
Yep. I'm not even moving any walls, actually, I'm pretty much just adding some cabinets.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Within the first and second floor of the existing house?
Just on the second floor.
Oh, okay.
So, pretty much all you're really doing is, you're adding a kitchen to, and it's really what it looks like, it's just you're adding a kitchen, and then defining a bedroom, more or less?
Yeah, it kind of went from like my, it was like an office off the master, now it's gonna be a bedroom.
Okay. What's the total number of bedrooms in the, in the house?
Including the in-law, there's gonna be four.
How many do you have now?
Three, and an office, pretty much.
Okay, is, um, so you're going from three to four?
Mm-hmm.
Do you know if your septic system's a four-bedroom system?
Right now, it's not, but I had plans drawn up by shame-gloung?
Yep.
For a four-bedroom.
To increase it?
Yep.
Okay. Um, that, that would need to be done, or you'd have to, you know, remain as a three-bedroom.
Okay.
You know, whether you, you took two small bedrooms in the house and combined them, or whatever, but you can't increase the design for over?
Okay.
What, you know, what it is.
Yep.
I mean, that's a board health concern, but they, they probably won't sign off on it until that's done, I wouldn't think.
Gotcha.
I mean, I, I don't see any issues with it. Who, who's gonna be living here?
Family.
Family? Like, relative?
Probably my sister, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Alright, and you said it's all on common electric, and common gas, or oil, whatever it is, heat system, that stuff?
Gas and electric.
Yep. And you got the parking? You guys have any questions, concerns?
No.
So, I guess my only question is, so you, as far as access is concerned, you're not changing any of the access doors, um, so basically, how's it gonna be accessed, it's gonna be accessed, is it gonna have a second means of egress on the second floor?
Yep.
Are you showing that on this?
Yeah, it's in one of the pages, it's on the file, right?
Okay, so, on the file, right?
There it is.
So you added, so you, you are adding that, or is...
That's actually already there.
It's already there?
Yep.
Okay. Have you pulled a permit for it?
Well, I pulled a permit, that was including the renovation I did.
Okay.
So that was in there.
So you pulled a permit?
Yep.
Okay. Um, and yeah, I mean, I, I don't see, it's within the existing footprint, it's gonna have to go in front of board of health, I don't know if you want to make that a condition of the approval, um, but I think, you know, it works. And it's under 900 square feet, right?
Yep, it's a little over 600.
Okay. Well, I mean, board of health is gonna need to sign off on it before the permits are issued anyway, you know, just like any, any application for a building permit, so...
Unless, you know, Mr. Chairman, unless you want to make it a note, um, on the approval, or make it, I mean, I know they will, but, so it doesn't get assessed?
Do you have any questions or concerns, Josh?
Uh, no, everything seems good, it has two means of egress, um, under the 900 square feet, I don't see any issue with this.
Alright, well, I'll entertain a motion to approve the special permit for Mike McDonough at 908 High Street for an in-law apartment within the existing dwelling, and conditional on board of health signing off, or septic system to be increased, um, to support the additional bedroom.
So what's?
Alright, we got moved by Bill?
Second.
Second by Sean, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, 3-0-0.
Thank you very much.
Did you bring your envelope by any chance?
I did, yep.
All 17 of them.
Alright.
Alright, so next up, 710, we have an informal for 210 Liberty Street for Rick Allen, um, represented by Donna McKenzie, fully.
Good evening. Brian Weiner with Donna McKenzie, civil engineer, Rick Allen, 210 Liberty Street, Rick, Rick's son-in-law. So, appreciate your time, and thank you for all the conversations and phone calls, Virginia.
Yeah, but you have a lot of patience.
Appreciate it. So, I don't know if you have copies of it, but we had some extra plans, and some of the letters and so forth, but, um...
Yeah, there was an old zoning decision, right?
Correct, and I'm hopeful that what we're doing actually resolves that problem years ago.
Thank you.
And, uh, this is sort of a win for everybody, and I, give you guys a copy of the plan, walk you through what, what we've looked at, and what we think makes sense. A few extras here, okay, so, I, I, you know, Brian's civil engineer with Donna McKenzie, so, 210 Liberty Street, it's a unique property, it has frontage at Liberty Street, and it also has frontage at Alden Road. So years ago, when the house was built, 1987, Alden Road wasn't here, and so, there was no frontage, and this was a pork chop lot, and so, the way that it went forward is, is that it had the frontage on Liberty Street, and so twice the area, it met the zoning requirements, and they had this, this small, 16 or so-foot strip, to sort of connect it and make it all one parcel, again, no, no road was here back then. And so, then along came Alden Road in 1997, and so if you looked at just this lot alone, this, this lot is a fully conforming lot by zoning, but what happens is if you go that route, is, is this, this lot then becomes non-conforming, which already has a house on it, and so, we, we think this is a unique situation, and what we're hopeful is, is this some means that we could move forward with a home on this lot, which, which would be for his family, his, his daughter, and son-in-law, and we could make this two separate lots, and so this is a, you know, finished house is on both sides, and so this vacant lot, put in another house of the same character, and it's gotten the support of the neighbors, and so, that's the hope, is how do we move this forward, and it, it's not straightforward by the zoning regulations, and so what we're hopeful is, is there's some approach that we could use to move this forward. I understand the intent of pork chop lot is to not have driveways with houses all over that are set back, and so, this is unique in that this frontage on both roads, and so it lends itself well to, I don't know what you think, what would be reasonable, and hopefully another taxpayer in the town. So I've been working with Rick and his family to see if there's a way to move this forward, and we're hoping for your input, and...
What's on this, what's on this other lot, or whatever you want to call it, right now?
There was a chicken coop that was taken down, it's just kind of vacant land, just miscellaneous stuff up there.
So the house is, the house is over here, and what you're saying is it's connected by 16 feet?
16-foot strip, and so years ago, in 1986, the, the previous owner, which, it's in the package we put together, they tried to do something similar, in that this road wasn't here, but they wanted to also put a house over here, and so the reason that that zoning was denied at the time before this house was built, is because this strip was 16 feet wide, and it wasn't going to be adequate for emergency access, so, when Alden Road was constructed, it resolved that problem, and the reason for not being able to put a house here in that 1986 decision.
Kev, I actually, I actually built the house next door, so I'm just gonna step out first, 'cause I just don't want to be involved in any aspect, any of those informals, I just don't even want to be involved.
Yeah.
Um, so, I'll let you guys discuss.
So, that, that's the only thing, I would go through this briefly, and it kind of confused me with, so there was a deny for a variance on the real lot, and do you know any more about that? I mean, I was looking at this and just trying to make sense as to why you put it in here, for us to look at. Was there something that was relevant with it?
Because we're, because we're pursuing the same application back from 1986, is our same situation, but we've resolved that reason that it was denied, by now having the frontage at Alden Road, which at that time didn't exist. So if the Alden Road frontage was here back then, that, that variance would have likely gone through, because the reason it was denied is because there wasn't enough room to put a driveway through here to have a house.
Right.
So we, we wouldn't be doing that, we would have the driveway off of Alden Road.
Right.
And that was, that was the reason, and so, years ago, Rick was aware of that history with the property, and so when this happened, he'd, he'd been thinking about it for a number of years, and he thought now is a good time to hopefully...
All the, all that's over here, you're saying is a chicken coop, there's no, like, utilities coming in here, there's no septic system, there's nothing over there?
No, the, the septic for this house is entirely on this lot, so it's, it's just a, just an open parcel, some of it's been cleared.
Yeah, I'd agree with you that it's unique, because, I mean, realistically, if you were to take this off, it's not gonna impact it at all, um, other than, like you said, it, for compliance, that it's, it was permitted as a pork chop lot, right?
It was, years ago, and it made sense at the time, and now that, you know, with different circumstances, this neighborhood is fully built out now.
Right.
This, sitting here in between the two houses, it makes sense, I think.
Can I, do I get a chance to just, I'm a neighbor, I live in the lot right there, 33?
Yep.
My name's Eric Wagston, um, it, it, that lot needs a house, I mean, because now we get the street going up Alden Way, I was permitted to build the first lot on the left, and then Ricky's land, and then, as Bill, excuse himself, he put out, built a house there in the next corner lot.
Yep.
So now it would make perfect sense to have a house there, this is a wooded lot.
Right.
It's not used for anything, it's just kind of, so I fully support that.
Were, were these two separate parcels, or was it always considered one? Was there a separate deed for this, like, when they were combined, when it was built on?
Yeah, there was, there was a bunch of different lots at the time that were subdivided, and this other pork chop lots along Liberty Street, and so, I, I could get you more information, but this, this was specifically set out to meet that requirement, along with other lots along Liberty Street.
I mean, to me, I'm just looking at it like it's two lots that someone bought and they combined, not necessarily, the configuration of this being, you know, one, that someone subdivided this piece off as one, it looks to me like this was a separate lot, similar to, like you were saying, the ones to the left and the right, um...
Yeah, when, when they set, when they set it up, the, the pork chop lots along Liberty Street, this, the intent I know they had was to do something here, and they, they applied for it, it didn't go through at the time because of the access, because that driveway to this home would have been along the same driveway and through Liberty Street.
So you, so this, this lot here, the proposed parcel B, you're showing 42,130 square feet, where this property line, the proposed line is gonna be?
Would be here.
But this is, what district is this, you need 40,000?
You would normally need 40,000, correct?
Right.
It's an AA, it's residential AA.
Yep.
Because of the pork chop situation, it, yeah, you'd have to have double.
Right, but my question to you, my question to you is, prior to even proposing anything, wouldn't it make sense to cut this right down to 40?
We, we can, and that's what we'd like to do.
Yep.
Because this would be fully conforming if we draw the line right here.
Right, but even if you change this line somewhere over here, and you made that exactly 40, and you gave an additional 2130 to this, I understand it's still not in compliance, but it's another 2130 closer to compliance, um, and it wouldn't need a frontage variance, it would need a, an upland and an area variance, I guess.
And so what, so what happens is if we divide it, then the existing home, that lot becomes...
Right, that, that becomes non-conforming, because it's, it, it's, it was permitted as a pork chop lot, that's how it was permitted, correct? You went back in the folder and that's, it didn't get a frontage variance?
No, not that I'm aware of.
That was the outcome of this original denial for this, and then they went back in front of zoning, or they just?
No, so, so they, they applied to do what we're doing, but the, the frontage would have been from Liberty Street, and the reason it was denied is because this was the access for the driveway, and they didn't think it was appropriate, and so now that problem doesn't exist, we would entirely have access from Alden Road, a typical driveway. So it, it, it looks like it, everything makes sense on paper, and, you know, this is vacant.
Yeah, it's a unique situation, I'll give you that.
But we weren't sure how to move it forward, and we're hoping to get input, and...
What do you think, Sean?
I think it's a unique and tough situation, uh, given that we're making conforming pork chop lot, non-conforming, given that we've denied other things with, with a closer frontage variance, not in the same circumstance.
It's not looking for a frontage variance, it's looking for an upland.
Yeah, I know, but I'm, yeah, but, you know what I'm saying, though?
Yeah, yeah, no, I, yeah. Um, have you, have you tried getting any, you can't get any land from anyone else? Any of the abutists, or anything, no?
We've looked into it.
Yeah.
It just wasn't feasible.
Okay.
Like, it's obvious that I understand why, it seems like practically it makes sense.
I know.
But, uh, I don't know, it's tough, I don't know.
Yeah?
I'm in the same boat as Sean. It, it's a unique situation, um, and it, like you say, on paper, it makes sense. Uh, I would personally have to dive into the, uh, the bylaw book to, to educate myself a little further on the situation, um, before I'd be comfortable really giving any advice, so...
Alright, well, yeah, if you got any more information or anything you can provide to the board, I don't know if you plan on applying or not, it sounds like we kind of would need to see, you know, a real good reason, I guess, to, to be able to move forward with it, I think.
I feel like I need something a little more, it's just like, the practicality of it would make me, you know, understand why anyone would want to move forward with it, and I would want to, but given the way the bylaws are, and, you know, we're pretty firm about being against making a conforming lot, non-conforming, that's like, it's kind of a big no-no as far as the, that, yeah.
Yeah, we're hopeful, it's just...
This is a unique situation, though, like you're saying, it's like, you know, it's, it's, in all practical reasons, it's two separate lots, but, you get the tax revenue, I know, with the neighborhood, it's like, open spot between houses. It's a tough one. I don't know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be able to give you a position one way or another on what I think about that if it came in front of us. I know that, I can tell you that it's a tough decision to me.
Yeah. Have you talked to a good land use attorney about where they're connected by the 16, what's it, 16 and a half feet roughly? Is that wide enough to actually use both lots in conjunction? I mean, just the, just the legality of it, I'm curious.
Yeah, well, this was, allowed is a pork chop lot like that, but this distance, it, it didn't allow that, that was the reason the 1986 variance didn't go through to put a house here, because the access was through this 16-foot width, which, we, we would have access from Alden Road, just a typical driveway, so this, this would just be woods between the two of this, we, we haven't talked to a land use attorney. Open it was more straightforward, and, you know.
Yeah, well, I mean, yeah, I mean, practical doesn't always make sense, I mean, I, I can appreciate what you're trying to do, but it's like Sean and Josh had said, it's, it's kind of a, you know, putting us in a tough position to, um, you're looking for something that really, with what we have in front of us, in my opinion, it's really not warranted, um, with, with what you've given us so far. I mean, if you, if you find something that you can dig up, that can show that this property is already non-conforming or something, then, I mean, that's a different story, because of, you know, a non-conforming property, you can change, alter, continue, um, by special permit, that it, it wouldn't technically need a variance if it was already non-conforming, but where it was permitted, I believe, as a pork chop lot, I mean, that's, that's tough, maybe, maybe you can find something, maybe you can't, but, um, I mean, what, what you got in front of us so far, I think it's tough for us to, to make a decision probably in your favor. Um, I agree, practical and common sense, that you have this whole extra lot right here, essentially, um, but the bylaws state that you need to have double the area, like you said, so you need 80,000 exclusive of the access portion, so you'd need roughly, you know?
Yeah, with 30,000 or so.
Yeah, you, you're short quite a bit.
Yeah, in that respect, it's like not even close at that point, if that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, this, this lot by itself would be, you know, 52,000 plus square feet.
Yep. Yeah, I'd, I don't know, I'd dig into it a little more, and see if you can find any more information on, before the, before this was permitted, maybe, I mean, this, this to me looks like this was two separate lots, I mean, it, it doesn't look like it was originally one, it looks like two, that maybe there's something, if you go back, look at the deeds and the, and the lots that they referenced back then, that maybe that will help you from a legal standpoint, I don't know. Um, but if you have any more information you want to, want to submit to us, just pass it on to Virginia, and we can take a look at it.
It's not possible to do any type of accessory structure on the same lot, right?
Um, yeah. Yeah.
If you keep it one.
Not sure if you could do that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be family.
That's why I mentioned this.
Yeah, um... Yeah, I mean, take a look at the bylaws, and, you know, if you can come up with something, it's up to you to propose and present, you know?
Yeah, we'll take a look at the old deeds.
I would, I mean, I would always start there and just see where, where it came from, I mean, see where they actually were, were created from, and where they originated from. Might be something interesting that could help you, might not, I don't know.
Okay.
Alright?
John, thank you for your time.
Yeah, no problem. Yeah, we gotta get on to the, to the next hearing, but...
Alright, thanks.
720?
Maybe some stuck together here, gimme, I think they're all stuck together here, yeah.
So, we're running a little late there. Alright, so 729, the Hanson Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on September 28th, 2021, at 7:20pm at the Hanson Town Hall, on the application of Merrill Engineers, representing Thomas and Susan White, for a special permit under Town of Hanson zoning bylaws, section 6B, 6G, and section 8D, A3D, to construct a 36 by 24 addition to be used as an in-law apartment at 448 Indian Head Street, map 54 lot 7-10, Hanson Assessors map, property is in a Residence A Zone. We have a letter from the Building Inspector, Zoning Enforcement Officer Kerry Glass. I have seen him review the application. This office has no objections regarding this proposal. However, permits required must be issued prior to the start of any construction in accordance with 780 CMR 105. That's all I have for comments from boards and departments. If you want, run right into it.
Sure, good evening, my name is Dan Calabell, I'm here with Adam Ryan from AP Design Build, as well as the Whites, Susan and Thomas, and Robby. The property is located at 448 Indian Street, right, Indian Head Street, sorry, it's located on the easterly side of the road, approximately right between, uh, the, the Camp Kewanee Road and Cave Didd Lane. The property consists of approximately 29,500 square feet, all of which is considered upland. On the property currently is an existing single-family dwelling, along with the driveway, several decks, uh, upwind deck and several sheds, along with a, an ingrown pool and patio area, along with other associated site, um, features. According to Assessors Maps, the lot was... According to Assessors Maps, the lot was constructed in nineteen sixty-eight. The applicants are proposing to construct a new, um, approximately thirty-five foot long by twenty-four foot wide in-law, um, addition on the north easterly side of the property, kind of behind the, the existing structure. Their plan is to move into the new in-law addition and their son Kevin is going to move into the main house to help them, uh, maintain the property as they, uh, they grow older gracefully. Um, a special permit has been requested to allow the use of the addition as an in-law apartment. Uh, this is allowable use under section V six G of the Use Regulations of the zoning bylaw. As long as it meets the, the six requirements set forth in the bylaw as follows. The owners will occupy the, um, existing and proposed structure, actually the, the portion, uh, structure, portion of the property. There will only be one in-law apartment on the premises. The appearance of the apartment, um, will be in keeping with the existing structure. I see, uh, in this area, this would be the new addition in this area. This would be the front, this would be the, the left elevation. Uh, the main entrance to the apartment will be on the westerly side, or left side of the addition. Um, all utilities will come through the existing structure and there will be approximately four to five parking spaces on the property where three at a minimum would be required. So we do have a fairly large driveway area. The applicants understand that the in-law apartment will, uh, the use will, will be terminated if the house is sold or if it, um, it's occupied by anyone other than a family member. And they also understand that the apartment will not be permitted prior to the issuance of a, a special permit from the Board of Appeals as well as a building permit for the, the building inspector. If that's generally it, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
So you meet the size requirement, I mean, obviously, you know, frontage area, that stuff we can't change. You are meeting the setback.
That's correct.
Twenty feet. And it looks like you got a new system designed there too?
Yes.
So that's good.
Currently, the existing system's four bedrooms, so we'll be increasing that to a five bedroom and just putting in a new septic system.
Good. The additional entrance is going on the side, right?
That's correct.
You got enough parking?
Yeah.
I don't see any concerns. You guys got any questions?
Um, so the in-law is what, eight hundred and sixty-four square feet?
Uh, it's eight hundred ninety-three.
Ninety-three, okay.
Yeah, just under the nine hundred.
Yeah, I guess that's my, um, only comment, I, you know, it's under the nine hundred square feet. Yeah, I mean, I have no other concerns other than that.
I don't have any concerns, it looks good to me. It's under nine hundred square feet, everything else looks good. Looks pretty straightforward.
It might take a while, I guess the applicants are already living together.
Uh, yes.
So they wanna get this done sooner than that?
How could you tell? They love me.
No, it looks good, I mean, this is, this is a good plan too, looks good, nice show.
Thank you.
Yeah. You know, if you guys don't have any concerns or questions, I'll, uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve the special permit for a thirty-six by twenty-four addition to be used as an in-law apartment at, where are we, four forty, four forty-eight Indian Head Street.
I'll make that motion.
Seconded? Second, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Great. Good luck very much.
You know, sec, good luck with it.
Have a great evening.
Is that the house that you just put the pool in recently?
No, that's the one across.
Oh, it's across?
Oh, that's across the street from Skeev's place.
Oh, okay, yeah, they did a nice job of that, huh?
They did, yeah. They did a nice job, and I don't know if you ever followed that house, but it started out with a little seventeen hundred house, no foundation, and he actually picked it up, got the foundation.
Amazing, yeah, it looks awesome, it really does. Alright, good luck.
Thank you.
Have a good night, good luck.
Thank you, thanks, thank you very much.
Alright, guys, we got a couple more things we gotta get to here, so.
This is just an informative question. Do all in-laws, are they all deed restricted as far as when the sale, if there's a sale of property?
That's part of it, it's supposed to, the, um, the use of the in-law is supposed to be decommissioned at the sale of the property. It doesn't carry, it should, in my opinion, because if someone's gonna permit an in-law, do it the right way and then someone buys it, they should be able to use it. They're technically supposed to come in front of the board. Whether or not that's enforced or followed up, I mean, that's not, that's not really our job to do. Uh, but that's, that's what the bylaw says, that they are supposed to, if someone sells a house with an in-law apartment, that new owner is supposed to come in front of us for a special permit to continue that use of the in-law.
And, cause the decisions are usually recorded?
It is.
If somebody was, if somebody was doing a type of search, that would come up?
Yep.
The decision would.
Yep, but the zoning decision should be recorded, yeah.
It would come up on the aspect of the decision, but it wouldn't be an enforcement issue unless the town decided to enforce it.
Right.
Unless it was brought to the Building Inspector's attention and he enforced it. So it's not a deed restriction, I would say.
Yeah.
It's just a recorded decision.
Yeah. I, I mean, I personally think that when they, when they modify the bylaws, that that should be changed. It should carry with the property, you know, because if, if someone were to.
Come in.
Yep.
And there's been, there's been holdups on closings.
A lot of the in-laws, sometimes they're relatives when they call, they've been, either they were built before the zoning bylaw when in effect, for the in-laws, which is a different situation. But then we have those that don't come in and apply for the special permits.
Right.
So, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, to, to continue a use of an in-law, a legal in-law that someone permitted, like, like they just permitted, if they were to sell their house, I, I don't feel that someone should have to come in and re-permit that again, essentially. I think that should carry with the, with the property, you know? And if someone were to come in and get a permit to decommission it and use it as something else, then it would no longer have an in-law. Um, and then if someone wanted to put it back, they would need to get a permit, but that, that is what the bylaw says, that upon sale or transfer, that that new owner is supposed to come in for a special permit to continue the use of it, but that's like Bill said, it's an enforcement issue, not really, um.
I've just, I've just had relatives come in on it because it's marketed as an in-law, which it is, it is an in-law. But then they, then there's an issue with financing. If there's a recorded stipulation in there that it can only, it can only house, um, immediate family.
Well, then, I mean, that, that is the intention of it, or else it would be a two-family. You know, it would be an apartment or a two-family.
And a lot of them can't, don't qualify, like my house doesn't qualify for a two-family.
Yeah.
Okay, just information, that's all.
That, that stuff you might wanna, um, I know Lisa was working with someone on.
They're doing something with bylaws.
I think they're kinda just getting notes together on, on issues we got with the bylaws, that might be something good to bring up. I think that would help resolve some of it.
Lee, wasn't your house, wasn't that a two-family at one time?
It was.
So why isn't it the qualify for a two-family?
It was a two-family and then it was renovated back to a one-family. I was permitted to have a kitchen up there that I used because I had family there.
Yeah.
But, um, I don't have the square, I don't have enough land to have it actually listed as a two-family.
Right.
Even though, like, I, I have a, I have a lot of stuff showing that it was a two-family. I don't, I don't wanna convert it to a two-family. I don't, you know, I don't have any.
But John's house was built before zoning anyway, right?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. I'm not looking to convert it, I don't know if somebody would after I get out of there, but I don't wanna convert it.
Oh, okay, yeah, I thought that, okay.
I have a grandchild living in it, so she'll probably be there for a while.
Good luck with that.
Alright, so we got, um, do we have? We got the minutes that we looked over on that, that we just need to correct for next meeting, right? And then the, um, the decision, decision, we signed that, that was the only one available. And, uh, is there any other board member concerns, discussion, comments, anything? You guys wanna bring to the board's attention? That we can put on the agenda for next, next meeting or something?
When is the next meeting?
October, October nineteenth.
October nineteenth, yeah.
Uh, Kevin, could I just tap that, um, no, not that, that, Rob.
Yeah, um, I don't wanna discuss it tonight, but I do just wanna make everyone aware that there was another, um, open meeting law complaint. It's actually regarding the last one, it's kind of in conjunction with the last one. Um, so I just wanna make you guys aware that we will have this on our next agenda, um, to address.
Okay.
Um, I don't wanna discuss it tonight because it wasn't on the agenda, but I just wanna bring it to everyone's attention, that that will be on our next agenda.
Would you be thoughtful to get that in?
Sure, oh, absolutely.
Kind of review it beforehand? And so, Mr. Chairman, was that the complaint, is it from the same person or a different person?
It's, it's from, it's from the same person.
Oh, okay.
Uh, alleging that the, the initial complaint was never addressed, I guess.
Okay.
Um, but we'll, we'll, we'll put it on the agenda for next meeting and, um, we, we received it too late, we couldn't put it on our agenda, so.
Okay.
Um, so we'll address that next meeting.
And just a little, I don't know whether it's gonna happen or not, that Chris Lyons, I had a, a call from, uh, the girl that works with that attorney, Barry Crimmins, he had been over there and was looking to hire them. And I guess Mr. Crimmins looking into the background and all, and her coming in and getting records from the Building Department. He basically told Mr. Lyons that he would be better off to just come in and withdraw without prejudice and then deal with the building on the gas, all the permits, get in the building straightened out instead of trying to make this into a three-family, because he said it isn't, it isn't gonna happen. So he will not represent them. So I don't know what Mr. Lyons is gonna do from that point.
That's on what?
Eight-thirty Main Street.
Hobby Shop?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Is that coming back in soon, I know we continued that?
That's coming on October nineteenth.
Okay.
Okay, so that's, that's our next one, it's the nineteenth?
The nineteenth, yep.
Okay.
And Joni's gonna be on vacation, so.
Okay.
And I'm gonna be on vacation the week before that Columbus Day.
Okay.
Whatever, but.
Alright, well, we'll just have to make sure we get our, get our agenda together and we'll just make sure that.
Yeah. So just to be clear, Mr. Chairman, so on October nineteenth, Joni will not be here for that meeting, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, she's gonna go to Florida, she'll be in Florida through the twenty-eighth of October.
Okay, just a little checking.
Yeah.
Everyone else is available for the nineteenth, I hope, right?
Yes, I am.
Alright. Alright, so if we don't have any further discussion on any, any old business, um, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, meeting is adjourned at seven forty-three.